Good evening.
Good afternoon.
My first left woman, Ethan Winfider. The time is 7:00 PM and I call this town meeting to order. At this time, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the call of the meeting. I have a motion to waive the call.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Please question. All those in favor of waiving the reading of the call of the town meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen, motion carries. Next order of business is the election of a moderator. Do we have any nominations for a moderator?
I move. We nominate Lee Sandora for moderator, second.
Any other nomination?
Move to close nominations.
Second nomination.
Second.
All those in favor of opposing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen, nomination is not closed. Nomination of Lee Sandora as moderator. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming out on this beautiful night. I know it's tough to, you know, come into here and, you know, listen to all this stuff and, you know, vote and do all that, but we really appreciate you guys coming. So, thank you very much. Uh, the first thing I'll do tonight is read the voter eligibility. In order to vote at town meetings, we must be an elector of the town or a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more who jointly or several is liable to the town for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grant list of the town. Okay, so our first piece of business here, uh, do I have a motion, uh, to be brought forward? The first motion?
I move that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $5,608,000 for the general government, $20,090,000 for the Board of Education, $1,204,730 for debt services, $600,000 for capital reserve fund, totaling $27,502,730 dollars be adopted as recommended by the Board of Finance.
Okay. Now we'll have some discussion. This is a discussion only, it's not a vote. So, uh, for the first, we're gonna do the Board of Finance. And if you do have questions after each one, Board of Finance, um, the town government and then the Board of Education will take questions after each one. And please stand up and state your name and where you reside. Okay? Thank you. Oliver?
Thank you, Lee. So, for folks who don't know me, I'm Oliver Davis. I have the privilege of serving as the vice chairman of the Board of Finance. And tonight, I'm gonna walk us through the annual budget. Um, I know some folks here have seen this a couple of times, so my focus is primarily gonna be on what has changed. I can imagine that's what people are most interested in. So, uh, Jay, if you wouldn't mind starting us off?
Page down, Jay.
Here with me?
Yep, no worries.
Oh, okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay.
Okay. So, as I mentioned, what did we change? So, what you'll see up here is twofold. The first is what we have changed since the most recent referendum, and then a second section outlining what has been changed since the original proposed budget went to the first referendum. So, the most recent draft, we have looked to reduce general government by an additional 30,000 and Board of Ed by 145,000. What that does is it brings the total reductions since the first referendum by 310,000. That's broken down by the 30,000 of general government that is added here, the 180 from Board of Ed, which would be the 145 here, and the 35 from the prior reduction, and 100,000 capital that was reduced as part of the prior cuts, uh, in the last referendum. So, what does that mean? It means ultimately the mill rate is gonna anticipate to be dropped from 30 to 29.8, where we originally had 30.5 before we went to the first budget. So, 30.5, we got 30, and now at this most recent referendum, we're gonna drop it to 29.8. If you could hold questions till the end? Thank you. So, this is just kind of a breakdown on how we anticipate everything going if the budget were to be approved. It shows the changes that we just talked about. What I wanna bring folks' attention to rather than just read the whole slide is ultimately the bottom line changes that would be in the upper right-hand corner. So, currently, our mill rate for property is 36.3. I've mentioned it was 30.5, then 30, and 29.8. That would end up being a reduction of almost 18% to the mill rate. Motor vehicles is capped at 32.46 by state statute, so that would then reduce to 30.5. That didn't happen. 30 didn't happen. So now we're looking at 29.8, which would be a change to a little over 8% reduction for motor vehicles. Okay. So what happens now? So, because the budget didn't pass, we are postponing sending out tax bills from July 1st to August 1st. If the budget were to pass, it would be kind of business as usual, the bills would go out a little bit later, everyone would get one tax bill and pay it as normal. Just a little bit later, we have extra cash put aside every year as a cash balance. We can use that to keep operating, happening in the interim. Um, what we wanted to do is bring attention to what would happen if it does not pass. Don't want to influence people in any way, but want people to be aware of the facts and the impacts. So again, if it passes, it would just be regular tax bills as normal. If it doesn't, however, we would have to set in a lower tax bill or a lower mill rate and send out one tax bill. And then once we were to find out what that final mill rate would be, there would be a supplemental tax bill for the difference. So for example, and these are just for illustrative purposes, these numbers are just ones that make up for sake of ease, not at all what may or may not happen. If we were to say, all right, we're at 29.8 as a mill rate and it doesn't pass, saying we send, uh, a mill rate of 25,000, so we could get some money in, get town bills paid, keep everything going smoothly, and then we eventually set out a budget for this, say a mill rate of 29, there would be a supplemental tax bill that would go out for the difference between that first one and what the ultimate mill rate would be. So in the example, it's purely an illustrative example, you would receive a tax bill for a mill rate equivalent of 25, and then an additional one for the equivalent of 4% mill rate, or 4-mill rate. Uh, challenge with that is it can be kind of confusing, right? People may get a second bill, not know what to do with it, so it's not the ideal scenario. The other challenge is there's additional cost associated with that. It would be an additional 8,000, uh, if we were to have a supplemental tax bill. The other thing that we just wanted folks to be aware of is each and every time we have a referendum, it costs the town about $7,000. So again, not trying to influence people one way or another, just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of all the facts. This is kind of the calendar going through May 7th. I think we've all familiar with this, this is kind of what's happened so far. So if we could actually switch to the next one, Jay? We are right now on the middle, right there. We are on 618. The budget has failed, 461 to 412. So if you look at the blue Chevron below it, that's tonight, 627, that's the town meeting. And this is where we're showing the 175 additional reductions, bringing the total reduction to 310,000. This would have a Board of Selectmen budget of 3.18% increase and a Board of Ed budget increase of, uh, 4.95. Uh, we are targeting to have another machine vote referendum on July 9th. Sources of revenue, I think we've, you know, Jeff has done a great job kind of bringing people through it the last couple of presentations. Nothing really has changed here, it's property taxes, state grant, talent fees and interest, as well as use of the cash balance.
Revaluation?
Again, I think Jeff has done a great job of talking about this in the last couple. Um, it is a very important topic because this is probably the most impactful piece of what's gonna impact people's taxes in, uh, this year. So every five years, a real estate reevaluation is done where we reassess what the property values are, and that is what's driving us, our, our big changes today. So, if, uh, you switch it over? Okay. So this is showing how, because real estate values have increased so much, we are now responsible for, as homeowners are responsible for a larger overall percentage of what the town taxes are. So if I can kind of give an example using much smaller, much lower numbers, just to kind of help illustrate where we are. If our overall tax taxable property was 400,000, for example, and half of that was real estate, 200,000, and half was the rest, you had a revaluation, in that prior example, we're 50/50, right? We're, we're responsible for half in taxes. Now say property went up from 200,000 to 300,000. The overall taxable property in town in that example would have been 500,000. But, as homeowners, our responsibility in that analogy will have gone from 200 to 300,000, or from 50% to 60%. So, that's not the exact numbers, the exact numbers are going from 58% to 65%, but I hope maybe an analogy would make it a little bit, um, easier for folks. Go on to the next topic. Revaluation, these are the specific numbers, right? So, net grant list increase has gone up by 136 million. You look at that third bullet, the vast majority of that is the residential real estate. Yes, some of that is new real estate, but a lot of that is because of the impact of the revaluation. So, how does that impact the folks on average? So you can see, put very succinctly at the bottom, is due to this unprecedented five-year in real estate value increase we've seen, most of that tax burden is now shifting to the real estate or homeowners. So even if all the budgets were left completely flat, folks would have seen an average increase in their taxes of 9.5. I say average because it depends on the revaluation. You know, someone else in the audience's house may have reevaluated up at like, say, enough to have a 7.5% increase, where someone else may be at 11.5. But overall, the average tax increase, if there was no increases to any of the budgets, would still be almost 9.5% as a result of the revaluation impact. The phase-in. So, this is something that we talked about at the Board of Finance, and it was unanimously opposed. Uh, there are a couple of reasons for this. Um, it is something that is very infrequently used. So when we looked at Connecticut in the last, you know, two years, of the 60 towns that went through a reval and were eligible to do this, only four of them did. And what's happened is, that was generally because a budget referendum had failed six, seven, eight times, and it felt like there was no choice. But ultimately, for us, when we looked at it, we looked at a couple of different models, and even with a two-year phase-in approach, we were still looking at an 8.9% increase for this year, and then an additional 9.4% increase next year. So this is something that to us was not, something that the town on the whole would appreciate. So that was one of the reasons we stayed away from it. Instead, we opted to use more of the cash balance. Talked about that in a little bit later. Um, the other challenge is, this impacts what we get for state aid. We didn't wanna adversely impact the amount of money we were getting from state aid by doing a phase-in. We wanted to try and do it, for lack of a better terms, organically, where we're drawing down more of the cash balance this year, potentially increasing the benefit next year. And that way, it's having less of an impact outside of what we can control. Next slide, please. Mill rate. So, you'll see here, this will show what we have, and then in parentheses, we're showing what it was with the very first referendum, and then what it was after going into the second referendum. So, for example, we've kind of talked about Board of Finance is now gonna be, we're anticipating a mill rate of 29.8, was 30.5, then it was 30 going into the last referendum, now down to 29.8. Uh, so, what does this mean as a taxpayer, right? What's the impact to us as taxpayers? So, for residential property, it's gonna impact your average homeowner by about 11.7%. So again, when we look back on what I was talking about earlier with the reval, 9.45% of that is purely the result of the revaluation. So when you look at it, only 2.35 is actually the impact due to the increase in budgets. The vast majority of the impact to the taxpayer is because of the revaluation. Uh, and you can see, like I said, in parentheses, the original impact to the taxpayer was gonna be 14 1/3%. That got reduced to 12.45, and it's now been reduced to 11.7. Motor vehicles, we talked about how it's capped at 32.46%. That is gonna follow the same mill rate schedule, it's now been reduced to 29.8. We estimate that that will resume, excuse me, result in an average decrease of about 11.6% for motor vehicle impact. State grants, uh, see a modest increase of 4.9, and we also get a little bit of money from the Connecticut Airport Authority for, in lieu of taxes for Bradman Airport. Other ways to re-raise money is from charges for permits, licensing, activities, but again, most of these are set at, by the state on what they can be. And then interest on the general funds currently at 5%. Okay. Use of cash balance. So I mentioned earlier that we are drawing this down in an attempt to mitigate tax impact. We wanted folks to see what is anticipated to be. So, our goal is always to try and keep that at 10%, that is, or higher. And that has been our board policy for a couple of reasons. One, we like to make sure that we have enough money if there's an emergency, so that we can cover bills, right? We use the example of, we're deferring sending out tax bills. We're now able to leverage this money in order to do that. We can pay bills in the meantime until that tax rate goes out a month later than it's scheduled to. Uh, the other thing is it's used for when we go out to get a bond. You know, we are looking at potentially replacing a school roof, making sure that when we go out to get a bond, we're getting the most favorable rate. No one wants to waste money on interest. Having a good fiscal responsibility and showing that we have at least 10% in reserves helps us get the better rate, which helps keeps the interest down. Uh, and then there's additional ways that the cash balance can accrue, uh, higher revenue than expected, state budget is often completed after ours, that can have impact on us. Uh, and also if the operating budgets came in less than what they were extra budgeted for, that would give us a little extra tax as well. Okay, cash balance. So we anticipate drawing it down by $1,255,599. We're doing that because it allows us to keep the cash balance above 10%, but it allows us to mitigate the impact to the taxpayer. We have been drawing it down year after year to do that, COVID and some other circumstances. But I do want folks to know that, for a point of comparison, we're talking about bringing it down almost 1.3 million this year. We brought it down 1.1 million over the last three years from buying. So this is a significant use of the cash balance in order to try and mitigate the tax impact for folks. This is a breakdown of the revenues. Um, you can see that bottom line number, the 273% increase. Why is that? That's the use of the cash balance we talked about. That's the primary driver of what we're doing to bring money in, to try and mitigate the tax increase. And this is just the same information presented in the pie graph, showing a change from the last referendum to the next one. Expenditures. So this is showing the breakdown by our, our primary, um, expenses, right? So Board of Ed, we're projecting, based on the guidance that we've given to go to this next budget referendum, a board, uh, budget increase of 4.95%. General government is the 3.18%. And then debt payment has gone down, and that happens because as the debts go further out, the amount you have to pay as part of that schedule typically decreases. And then we reduced the amount of money that we're putting into the capital reserve. So what is the net increase on the expenses for the town of East Grand Lake compared to last year? It's a 2.96% increase over last year. Again, same information on the bar graph form, uh, oh, I'm sorry, pie graph form. Debt services, we kind of talked about, I know Jeff has spoken about this in the last couple. This is just showing what they are, what we had borrowed, and what our balances are. And capital reserve, uh, sorry, yeah, capital reserve fund. So this is what we have occasionally called our savings account for major purchases. We need to get an apparatus to support the fire department or the police department that comes out of our capital, is, uh, something that has to be, each purchase has to be approved at the town meeting. Uh, each year, we put X amount of money into the capital reserve. We had anticipated trying to increase that year over year because it had been such a small amount for the last couple of years, or, I can't say small enough, same amount for the last couple. So we had a plan to gradually increase it. Uh, however, with the most, with the first budget referendum, we actually reduced it by 100,000 to 600,000 for this year because we thought that would be the best way to maintain the town's services while having a better impact on reducing the amount of tax pay. So we're about to go into presentations by the general government and the Board of Ed, and they will speak to their specific changes. Does anyone have any questions on the material that's been presented? Go ahead, John.
Sure. Um, I, I raised my hand the first time because slide number two, it says personal property, motor vehicle, when in fact you wanted to say, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle. That's what threw the hand up.
Yeah.
But the question I have is, by deferring, um, billing and the due date from July 1st to August 1st, if I calculate it real quick in my head, it would seem to me that the town's losing between 16 and 70,000 dollars in interest. Is that a reasonable guess? Does anyone else wanna give me an idea as to whether or not that's an accurate figure?
It's a good question. I don't know.
I, I think it is.
Okay.
You showed a slide showing 5% anticipated, uh, return on the, on town money, which I think Kelly's here, so we can't verify that. But by deferring a month, you've got, you know, do the math on it.
Sure, yeah, 5% on.
If we're collecting in the first half of the year, we're anticipating, I, and I can't remember what your levy number is, it's, um, is it gross 22 for the year? So 11? So 11, and, you know, we should be receiving somewhere close to about 0.4% per month. Do the math on that.
Yeah, it's, it's about something that we wanted to do.
Right.
Circumstance driven, right?
And I understand, I understand that, but I, I think that the people should know that the longer this, this plays out, it's not just the 7 or 8,000 dollars that it costs for a referendum, it's the opportunity lost that the town has on revenue that it should be receiving, should have been receiving. You know, some, some people pay them prior to July 1st, so we're losing a fairly good-sized number, and I know there's people in here that can do the math just as quick as I can, but I would think it's somewhere in that kind of neighborhood. And, you know, I, you know, I applaud the Board of Finance for saying, listen, August 1st is a drop date, and if we have to go to six referendums, then so be it. But I think everybody should, should understand that, that this whole process and, you know, going through it, it costs us more than just 7 or 8,000 dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's something that we're not, we don't enter into lightly. It's circumstance driven. I, I do also worry about the confusion with potential supplemental tax pay. We don't have a way of accurately being able to judge what the impact of that will be in a way where we can calculate that number. So, no, it's a, a valid point, Tom. Any other questions?
Well, my name's Paul Colleen, I live on the Sunrise Terrace, and down to a point, it's maybe 75,000 dollars in cost if, if we don't, you know, pass this, this referendum. And, you know, with, with that, and the idea that the first two referendums were clearly a pushback on the Board of Education's budget, look at the voting, it was, that, that was really where the, the town spokes were really pushing back. Um, I wonder if there's not a third choice for the referendum? So clearly a yes and no, like we've always had, but a third choice that would be binding, that would offer a five-year plan, uh, going forward. So for example, uh, in year one, two, the budget increase, uh, for the Board of Education would be maybe 50% of what the social security increase is. And then in years three through five, it would equal to the social security increase. So that way, uh, the townsfolk that, that are seeing that, you know, costs are too high as compared to what their income is, um, they would see a, a path forward that would be, uh, acceptable to them, uh, to kind of take control of, of what's happening with the cost increases on the Board of Education. It would allow us to pass a budget now and avoid the 75,000 dollars. So, the third question would be around what I just described, and it would be binding. So that would, uh, you know, we'd have to go forward with that. So I wonder if something like that, if that's possible.
It's, uh, I, I don't know if it is a good suggestion. I know there are limits on what you can and can't ask as part of the budget process. I know folks have suggested in the past, you know, pick budget A, budget B, budget C, which would you prefer? And unfortunately, that is not something that's allowed to happen.
I'm sorry. If, if I understood what you presented, Oliver?
Yeah.
The deferral to August 1st is a done deal. We've already been approved by OPM, correct?
I don't know about that. I know this is what we are projecting to do. I don't know what the status of the rule is.
I don't know how we would have a referendum on, whatever, let's say, date, the 9th?
July 9th.
Right. I don't know how we'd have one on the 9th and bill on the 1st, right? So.
Yeah.
I would assume that that's, that's a done deal. So any, any discussion of trying to avoid that, Paul?
Right. Yes, I, I see what you're saying. Yes, this is, this is the path that we.
There's no going back on that. That's lost opportunity that we've had on the 1st.
Correct. The budget fails, we have no choice but to set the next referendum and deal with the consequences.
I'm sorry. Particularly that, if, under the plan that you presented, if in fact, this next referendum goes down, it is the suggestion from the Board of Finance that we bill out, and we won't have additional opportunity loss.
We would bill it out.
On monies, and we will be billing out with them August 1st. So the revenue will be coming in, and interest will start to recur in August.
So if, if the budget passes next time, it's a much cleaner approach, right? So we would just set the mill rate, we set up the, uh, the tax bills and the due date of August 1st. If the budget does not pass, that is where we would have to use a supplemental tax bill. We would have to set a conservative mill rate, and I wouldn't want to entertain a guess on what that would be and tell folks the wrong thing. But it would be a conservative mill rate that we feel would be a floor on what would have gotten passed. And then there will be an additional mill rate tax invoice for the difference once the final referendum comes through. So we would have regular payments coming in at that point, but to err on the side of caution, it would be a conservative mill rate. So it wouldn't be the full amount as if, like, the budget passes.
And would it be building that into installments, or would it be a straight sub and up?
I believe it's gonna be straight sub and up, but I don't wanna tell you the wrong one.
Any other questions for Oliver? Okay, Oliver. Very, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll do the, uh, general government now. Jay, you have the presentation? Would it be easier if you could do it right there? Or do you wanna come up here?
Um, you know, what do you think?
Even, you gonna do it?
She's gonna do it. To Jay.
Someone hit down on her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll return to you later.
Oh, thanks. You could just flip through that slide.
Okay.
Okay. This is going to be brief tonight. Eden and I are just going to go through the changes from the last budget. And as you can see on this slide right here, we have the prior year budget, we have the new revised budget of $5,608,000, which is essentially 3.2 percent year over year. Okay? That's just a rundown. What we did obviously is took the 30,000 out of the applied 25 column. So you could flip that slide, Oliver. So again, starting out, just looking at the changes from version two, we started out at $5,638,000. Registars, we were able to take down about $2,500, and the reason being is we had enough budget money to do so. We looked into the future, we looked at what all of our activities are going to be, and we were able to make that reduction. Audit, we just got our new audit program for the next four years, so we were able to drop that $200 because we have a new fee schedule. So we wanted to true up our budget. Tax collector, that drops 13,292. We, we had a change as far as when we put the budget together back in February, March, we had that slotted differently. We have since made a new hire. So what we did is we, we went into that line, we looked at all the expenses, and we were able to drop that down approximately $13,000. Public buildings, a minor adjustment of $723. Police Department, again, another minor adjustment. Public Works, working with Ed Hubbard, he looked at his staff, and what he did is, we got together last week, and he slotted a different position with a different need into a previous position that was budgeted earlier this year, and that resulted in a substantial decrease as far as his staffing costs are concerned. And again, he's looking at his requirements for the upcoming year, and we were able to take and slot someone different in a role that we had budgeted for earlier this year. Okay. Insurance retirement benefits, that went up approximately 30.
Thirty-nine thousand?
Thirty-seven. Thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand. And the reason being there is since the last budget was put together, we had a couple of new hires that were budgeted for insurance, so we had to add that in. Again, trueing that up with the offset being the reduction in Ed Hubbard's DPW. Social Security taxes went down because our staffing costs went down. And that, that was just a, you know, that was a pickup because of lower salaries. The RCC, we made an adjustment based on the current run rate. Again, to get to that 30,000 number, we do have that new bulky waste program that's going to commence in August, and we felt that, you know, we could make that adjustment. Utilities, we looked very carefully at all our utilities, and we were able to go in and make this adjustment. There was a couple in particular, there was propane and also telephone. So we looked at that carefully, we looked at the run rate over the last three years, and we were able to make this reduction. Contingency, we put money back into contingency. Our goal is to get the $50,000. Why? Contingency is used for any unplanned big expense. So the goal is to chip away, and we want to get that back to $50,000, and we're about, about 7K away right now. So if you add up that column, that is $30,000, starting out with the five, pardon me, the $5,638,000, reduction of 30, that gets us to our goal of $5,608,000. So that's how we came up with the $30,000. Any questions?
Excellent. Oh, Geraldine?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Jay? Please stand up and state your name.
You said you have a contingency plan for some.
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
You said you have a contingency plan or account for something that happens. Doesn't the Board of Finance already have that already? Is that kind of a double?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to get pulled. Sorry.
We, there's always been a contingency account.
Right.
And it's been drawn throughout the years for different reasons. So it's, it's a safety net for general government without having to go to the Board of Finance to ask for it.
It's a smaller account.
Right.
So this is 50,000, whereas I think the account I was talking about earlier is 10 percent of the entire budget per year.
The cash balance is the right.
And this also helps us with those smaller accounting things where the, the Board of Ed doesn't, has the ability to move on their own, whereas if general government wants to move money from one line item to another, they have to come to Board of Finance for approval. So just having this one net account that allows them to move money out of.
We still have to go to Board of Finance.
You do, but.
But if we're going on a line and don't have somewhere to transfer it from, we can transfer it from contingency.
Oliver, that's a good example. At the end of the year, we have to our account transfers. It's a lot easier to, to use that contingency as far as if, if one line is really overspent, or maybe there's two or three, we can turn around, we can use that contingency, transfer money in and out. Again, to my earlier example, if we didn't have a major unplanned, you know, expense, whereas if all the other lines are running tight, it's good to know we have that $50,000 contingency, just in case we need it.
It's also not as easy as transferring from, say, RCC to registrars. It has to be the same line item under that budget. So it has to be like postage to postage. You can't just transfer from department to department. So it's very specific how you can transfer. And so having the contingency account helps.
And it rolls over year to year if there's a balance?
Yes. It stays in our budget.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for Jay and?
We, I just got one further comment, just to start on the 30,000 reduction. This was a good exercise. Well, it's not good that we're, we're dropping 30,000, but it did afford us an opportunity to step back and say, okay, what was your previous budget? Okay, what changes have occurred since we crafted that previous budget? We were able to go in and not only make some cuts, but also true up some things. And what that will do for months from now, that will lessen the need for account transfers because what we're doing is we're, we're getting further in time, and we're able to make, we made those adjustments. Any other questions?
Any other? Okay, Jay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now we'll, we'll have Mary present the Board of Education.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Mary Heide, the new business manager. And Jay, if you want to go to the third slide?
Sure.
Thank you. As we recall, at our last town meeting, we presented a 5.71 increase, which this slide represents. Once the budget process started, we received notification of retirements, resignations, and requests for leave. These positions all came in areas where we're able to absorb the classes with current teachers, given a few smaller class sizes for grades nine, six through nine. We will continue to offer all of the courses and programs and studies, with the exception of two courses from the Business Department. Students who would like to enroll in these two courses, which are entrepreneurship and sports marketing, will have the opportunity to take the course through virtual high school. We will see some large classes as a result of these changes. However, no current teachers will be laid off, with the exception of the SIR-funded position. Going down line, healthcare, it came in lower after the initial quotes, allowing us to reduce that line. We condensed our bus routes from seven to six. We reduced supplies and subscriptions by 30,000 district-wide. There will be no loss of programs. We shifted some subscriptions that are a bit less expensive, and we were able to purchase reading materials through SIR funds. We had a pair of professional retirement that will not be replaced. Professional development line will be decreased due to a change in our reading program, and we will no longer require the training these funds were earmarked for. We were able to look at electricity with a better rate. We will reduce middle school activities by 15,000. We're not eliminating the activity, just taking a reduction, which will, and we will continue to partner with Park and Recreations to offer after-school programming for our middle school students. And then due to a change in placement, we will not require a particular bus run. So that got us down, that was last, last time. Next slide, please. In order to meet the new guidance of 4.95, we will reduce an additional 145,000. Seventy-three thousand will come from certified salaries, an additional resignation that will not be replaced, and a teacher step adjustment. Twenty thousand will come from insurance. We actually got our insurance quote two days ago, and our workers' compensation has decreased due to the fact of decrease in certified salaries, and our property liability came in lower than we anticipated. And this is primarily due to the collaboration we are with the town. We now have one policy that we have the town and the Board of Ed is on the same policy. In prior years, we had our own policy, so we did realize savings from that. We're finding another 10,000 in savings for transportation, 4,000 for a change in placement, and another 6,000 as we locked in the price of diesel fuel. And then the last 20,000 will come from the administrators, as they will forego professional development funding for the upcoming year. They will continue to receive professional learning along with the teachers for new programs, and we will write other areas of professional learning into grants. Some PD funding will remain for areas in priority. And thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, go ahead. State your name and district.
Hi, Jeff Rameko. I'm Robert Ryan. Question about the parent professional. What makes you think that, why do you think you don't need to replace a parent professional?
We're going to absorb it with another person. I mean, we, we needed to cut the budget, so we weren't allowed to replace everybody, and we were able to take her position, and other people will take on that, that role. I mean, in a perfect world, we, we would replace it, but we were able to have other people take on that position at this time.
And they, for the occasion, what, what discipline was that?
I believe we'll have to move a few teachers, so that, we're not replacing her, but we're able to move some teachers around so that, as I stated, that no classes will be cut. There may be a few larger sizes, but we're able to move some teachers that teach the same thing, so that we're not losing any programs we're currently offering.
Okay. And the reductions in special education?
I had a hard time following.
It was a, it was someone who was on a particular bus that are no longer taking that transportation, so we're able to pull that out of our transportation line. There's a special ed student on a certain transportation, that they're no longer on that route, and we're able to save money in that line item.
I thought there was another one for like 15,000 or something. I thought it was on one of your slides.
I think it was 4,000 for the additional and then 9,000 because of the lock-in and diesel fuel. It was a combination of both.
I'm sorry, lock-in and?
Uh, diesel fuel, so it was a 10,000 transportation, was that the one you were looking at?
Did you remember the slide before this, please? I thought there was a, maybe I'm misremembering, sorry.
It was 35 originally, so the last, for the, that the last meeting was 35,000 because we were able to, one student decided, or they're on a different route, and they're no longer taking the special trip, the way the transportation works, they weren't taking one, so we were able to cut 35 from that budget.
Okay.
And, and then going forward, when we looked at the budget, there's an additional one we were able to take, if you want to go to the next slide, Jay, we were able to take an additional 4,000 out for special education, and then we took another 6,000 out as we locked in our diesel price for our gasoline.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the cost of the teacher's medical insurance back to that there?
We actually dropped the insurance by 160,000 from our original budget that we started back in.
What is the total cost?
I don't have that.
I can't lay bets.
I can't either.
Well, it was on our original two slides ago, but I can get it for you.
That's a large figure, right?
Salaries and healthcare and insurance is a large figure in the board of ed. Yes, it's all made up of, we are made up of.
I would like to go with that, yes.
I would, too.
I think Ricky's looking at, Ricky's looking at.
Yeah, I think it's not a question.
Okay, we can last the next question, please?
Hi, Kelly Antje from? Antje, oh. So I get all these numbers. What is the total dollar amount that you've reduced this time?
145,000.
145,000? In addition to the 35 from last?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have another, wait a minute.
Okay, sir.
Excuse me, my name's Dave Barton. I live on Windy Hills Road, 54 years, as a matter of fact. I don't understand, the Board of Education has a $20 million. They're reducing it by 145,000. That's chump change, for crying out loud. You have 800 and some odd people in the schools, if my numbers are correct, and about, if again my numbers are correct, about 250 or 60 in the high school. We've got five administrators plus other people going on there. These people are probably, and I don't have the exact numbers, but I would venture to say between their salaries and the benefits, which are a big part, I run a business, which are a big part of business, could probably be close to a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. If we're trying to save money, why do we need all of these administrators for 800 people? And 145,000 out of a $20 million budget? That's, that's, that's not, you can chump change, that's not even cutting anything. That's my feeling.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Are there districts that have schools, that are standalone schools, that don't have a single administrator, as in a principal, like Algrove has a single administrator, it's a principal, Seymour is the same? I believe the middle school and the high school each have a principal, and we have a superintendent. Are there other districts where there are standalone schools like ours that do not have a principal?
Where did you know? I don't.
Off the top of my head, I don't know. As far as population goes, I did pull some numbers just for quick comparison. Pulling this off of Ed's site. Last formal is 825 for East Grand Bay. That was 22 to 23. Next closest district is Litchfield, with 822 students. Our cost per student is 22,261. Litchfield, 23,554. Regional District 7, 831 students, cost per student 25,464. Regional District 6, 848 students, with a cost per student 23,898. Reading School District, 865 students, cost per student 29,232.
Could you look at North Stonetown, please?
Is there any other questions while he's looking that up?
I couldn't understand the question or the answer, or, because I couldn't hear him.
My question was, we have five administrators because we have four standalone schools and a superintendent. So each school has a single administrator, a principal. So I wondered if your thought was to reduce administrators, if there were districts that those folks knew about where there is a standalone school that spans preschool, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, four grades with no administrator? Because if we were to reduce, we would be leaving schools with.
And what was the answer to that?
No administrator. They're not aware that that, of one.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Mary or Ricky?
I have one last question.
Okay, sir.
What is the first people cost that he's granted me?
That's what Ricky was just, Ricky just mentioned that.
22.
Yeah, 22,000. What is that? Yeah, sorry. And the state average, which includes a lot more larger districts, is 21,143, the state average cost per student. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, yes, sir?
Hi, Albert in Crystal Drive. Two questions. The one of clarification one, from the first presentation, back whenever that was, the superintendent had mentioned that layoff notices had, have gone out. Is, are those folks getting laid off still? layoff notices had, have gone out. Is, are those folks getting laid off still under this budget?
No, as, since, as everything gets close to the budget, we were able to not lay off anybody, because we have resignations and retirements, or back when we started this process, we had zero.
So with the reduction of this money, no staff is being?
Except for the ester-funded position, which you knew about when we took on the ester funds for that one position.
And my second question is, you mentioned two or three times about class sizes increasing. Can you tell us, give an idea?
They're, they're still going to be within our guidelines, but they may increase a little bit due to the seven teachers, six teachers, I think it was six teachers on parent professional that's not returned. So they will increase a little, but they'll stay, be within our guidelines.
Can you give us an idea of what a little is, or your guidelines?
I think kindergarten K25 is, I think, 21 or 22 per class, and I think some of them are 19, did you have that? It is on the website. I'm, I'm very relatively new to East Granby, so I don't have it, but I believe I've.
Okay, do we have another question?
I just wanted to clarify, so by not replacing those, Amanda Thompson, Copper Hill Road, East Granby. So I guess my question is, just as far as clarification, we aren't laying anyone off, but because people are retiring, you're still missing approximately six teachers or staff that will have to be thinned out and reorganized to cover what's missing, right?
Correct. Some of the staffs are going to add a point two, so it's going to be a 1.0 to be a 1.2, so they can take on extra classes. We're using a virtual high school for some classes that we are not offering. So I think we have two teachers go from 1.0 to a 1.2 to take on additional classes.
Okay.
So we are, we are covering everything, we're offering everything we're offering, it's just, you know, instead of having, there may be a few extra, a few extra, two or three extra students, as opposed to what it was. We're trying to do our best with the budget that we have.
Okay.
And not impact the students.
And you probably don't know this is being new to town, but maybe somebody could just remind me, I believe it was, was it about 10 years ago, that the town had a vote to combine some schools in order to be able to reduce administration, and the town decided not to do that? They didn't want to spend the money to do that, to reduce the staff costs for insurance, for healthcare, all of those things, that would have been saved if we had combined schools, and the town decided not to do that.
I think that was about 10 years ago.
About 10 years ago, okay. So that was a choice that we made, and here we are, right? So I was just curious about how long ago that was.
Sorry, I cannot.
No, that's fine.
All right, any other questions that we have from Mary?
Yeah, thanks, ma'am.
The gentleman who asked about North Stonetown, they are 741 students, with a cost of 19,441 to the pupil. The one big difference I do see, is they only have two buildings. So with 741, maybe 25, we're probably talking an extra, one extra bus route, and then you also have two more on another building that heat cooled. That's probably where that difference comes from. Class size guidelines, dues.
It should be like 18 at K, and maybe 22, 23 at like grade five.
18 for kindergarten, grade one is 22, two through five is 22.
Okay.
Just for the others, 25.
All right. Gentlemen, one more question, right?
Just a statement, not even a question.
We'd like a question.
It seems, in other words, you know, I'm going to make my statement. Okay.
All right, if you want to make a statement, go ahead.
I was just going to say, every year, and even more so this year, they spend a great deal of money, they throw at the Board of Education. Really what good is it doing? We keep throwing money away, and we keep dropping down in the states. Where we used to be in the top 25% before high school graduates, that's down to 26, if my numbers are correct. And it seems to me that we're dropping down. We keep spending more money, and what are we getting for?
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mary. All right, so moving on, go to our next motion. Do I have a motion for the second to be brought forward?
I move that the hours of voting at the referendum to be held on July 9th, 2024, for the purpose of approving or disapproving the town budget for fiscal year 2024 and 2025, be extended to 6:00 AM through 8:00 PM.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the hours? 6:00 to 8:00? Seeing none, we'll just take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Staying? Okay, motion has passed. We'll move on to the next one. Do I have a third motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that the town close the high school tennis court repair, school custodial equipment, Seymour high school sidewalk repair, school Arrow High WiFi, school tile cleaning, main gym floor refurbishment, All Grove mini splits, and return existing funds to the capital fund as recommended by the Boards of Education and Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? The motion has passed. We'll move on to the next one. Do we have a fourth motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that the town close the RCC compactor pad, plow truck, fire truck lettering, ladder truck refurbishment, ladder truck equipment tower, accounting software, and to return existing funds to the capital fund as recommended by the Boards of Selectment and Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion has passed. Do I have a fourth motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that a sum not to exceed $75,000 from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for field irrigation with any unexpended funds to be returned to the Capital Fund as recommended by the Boards of Education and Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, we're zipping right through these. All right, no discussion, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? The motion has passed. And thank you for correcting me, it was the fifth one. Do I have the sixth motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that a sum not to exceed $25,000 from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for baseball, softball, field fencing, with any unexpended funds to be returned to the Capital Fund as recommended by the Boards of Education and Finance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? The motion has passed. Thank you. Do I have a seventh motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that a sum not to exceed $25,250 from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for classroom view boards, with any unexpended funds to be returned to the Capital Fund as recommended by the Boards of Education and Finance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? The motion has passed. Okay, do I have an eighth motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that a sum not to exceed $40,000 from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for indoor air quality testing, with any unexpended funds to be returned to the Capital Fund as recommended by the Boards of Education and Finance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Doing a lot of seconds today. Okay, any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Why?
Why what?
Why are we doing an air quality test?
Okay, go ahead, Ricky.
Yeah, so it's a new state mandate, just like anything else. They mandate what we need to do, but they don't give us money. It is rolling, and there are waivers that we can apply for, such as if a technician is not available in our area, because there is a high demand for the HVAC engineers who have to perform the air balancing and air quality. Since all the school districts are on the same mandate from the state. There are ways to kick it down the road, but it's going to have to get done in 2019.
Rick, is that, it's going to be every year?
Every five, I believe. And you can space out the schools, which is actually just right. The air balance is every five years. Air quality is every year. Okay, you don't have to do all buildings at once, but with projected wage increases, then it's, over the long term, it's financially more, it's possible to do it at once, since you have the team in your town already.
All right.
Question?
Yes.
So all this money that's coming out of the capital fund, wouldn't this normally just be coming out of the general government fund?
Well, it has to go to town needing in order to be moved to whatever location they need to move to.
So the savings that we had of the $30,000 really isn't there, because we're putting it, taking it from the capital fund? I'm a little confused.
Not sure what you're?
The five-year capital fund is part of our early budget, so it's already been budgeted for, this, this year we're taking out of is from the fiscal year right now, so it was already budgeted for.
Well, the money's already there in the capital fund, I get that. But I'm just saying, though, if we save $30,000 out of the general fund, and we're taking $50,000 out of the capital fund?
Right, we don't make capital purchases out of the operating fund. Normally, big purchases over $5,000 would fit in under the definition of a capital expenditure, so it would be, you can have the capital, not operating by then.
Okay, yes.
Betsy Tomalunas, wouldn't a lot of these things be considered maintenance, though, which isn't a capital expense?
This was a discussion this whole last year.
Yeah.
Technically, you can't use, you can't, you can't spend maintenance out of a capital plan.
Well, when I worked in corporate, I couldn't, so that's why I'm asking. We could never spend maintenance, you know, spend capital dollars on maintenance for anything. So it's just different, I guess.
A lot of the drivers also is the large dollar amount. So if it was under $5,000, you're right, that would be something that would normally come out of an operating budget, but for those larger dollar amounts that are one-off items, or infrequent items, that would be something we try to fund through capital.
But some of them are definitely maintenance, though.
Okay.
Yeah, but if it's air costed it, I think.
Yeah.
Any other questions on indoor air quality testing? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, the motion has passed. All right, do I have the ninth motion to be brought forward?
I move the adoption of the following resolution. Be hereby resolved that a sum not to exceed $20,000 from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for fire department air packs and cylinders, with any unexpended funds to be returned to the Capital Fund as recommended by the Boards of Selectment and Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes.
Amanda Thompson, I see a lot of fire department people here, so this is great, because we've talked about this at the Board of Selectment meeting, and, and we don't have fire people there usually to answer our questions, right? So I was just wondering if someone could just explain to me about the air packs, and like how often they have to be repurchased, and if there's a plan in the future to kind of stagger that out versus like a lump sum buying. Is there someone who can explain that? Thank you.
Yeah, I can take care of that. So the air packs are 10 years, and we've received, we've been, the town and the fire department fortunate to receive two grants in the past 20 years. So in 2004, and then again, a year ago, which we received the most recent grant for. However, at the time, we didn't own all the apparatus we have now. So when you apply for the grant, you can only apply for the number of right possessions. So essentially, we're looking for the four air packs to fill out the last truck that we just recently purchased. There is a plan, as you can see in the five-year capital plan, that we're trying to address the air packs by staggering them, rather than relying on the grant every 10 to 15 years.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the fire department air packs and cylinders? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, the motion has passed. That concludes our business for tonight. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Some move?
Some move, because I second. All those in favor, adjourn, please say aye. Thank you very much tonight. Tonight.